Let's give a round of applause to George Washington Carver Elementary School. And also to our neighbors and friends who live here in the Carver community as well. Let's give them a round of applause. Tonight, we're here to talk about another neighborhood, that is Navy Hill. Right in the middle of our downtown and our central business district. As you all may know, roughly two years ago, as the mayor of this great city, I issued a request for proposal on how we redeveloped an area of our downtown that has not seen any development. Not seen development for decades. And after 21 months of review, negotiation, and deliberation, we were able to issue a plan and agreement with the city council on August 5th, 2019. Thousand pages that would transform our downtown. And that's what we have before us today, an opportunity. So tonight, we're gonna have that discussion. A couple of goals, roadmap for tonight, and then a couple of goals for tonight as well. Who's doing the clicking? Am I clicking? I'm clicking? Alright. How you clicking? How are we clicking? Excuse me, we're having technical difficulties. Cut the cameras off. Oh, we got it, we got it. Alright, so let me give you the roadmap for tonight. First, you're gonna hear from me. Second, you're gonna hear from Leonard Sledge, the fellow who just came up here, who's the director of economic development as well. He's gonna give you the components of the Navy Hill project. The goals for this evening is, we as city government, this administration, will provide you why we think developing the Navy Hill area of downtown is essential for the growth of our city. And a little background about the project. And we are here also to answer questions. I will be joined by a number of experts and those who are, who've contributed to this project as well, who will be sitting in these seats right here after the presentations to talk about the why, to talk about the questions and answer the questions about why we're doing what we're doing. So, real quick, what is Navy Hill? Here are some of the components of the project. First, 12,500 jobs in construction and 9,300 permanent jobs. With roughly over 20,000 jobs in this project. 480 affordable housing units out of 2,000-plus housing units in downtown Richmond. 300-plus million dollars for minority contracting. The most we've ever had in the city of Richmond. New GRTC transit bus center right in downtown Richmond. So that those who do the hardest work in our city do not, no longer have to wait in the elements of our state. Those who change the bed sheets over at MCV or who mop the floors in buildings owned by the state government don't have to wait in the elements. This is it out. We're gonna build a new arena downtown, the largest arena in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Seventeen thousand five hundred seats. Also, we're gonna renovate the historic Blues Armory, build a convention center hotel to support our tourism industry. And also improve the infrastructure we currently have downtown, which is disconnected compared to other neighborhoods here in the city. The Navy Hill Development Project will create more than a billion dollars in incremental revenue to the city of Richmond. And here's the deal, guys. We have a 21% poverty rate in the city. And I'm very, very proud as the mayor of the city to say when I became, when I ran for this office, the poverty rate was 26, 25%. Today, it's 21%. Why? Because we're giving more and more people opportunity as we grow as a city. However, a lot of cities in this state do not have the challenges that are presented to the city of Richmond. You all know that this city is landlocked. Anexation has been prohibited because this was the same city that used annexation to add population, particularly a white population, to this city back in the 60s and the 70s. So that tool is no longer on the table. And in addition to that, the Commonwealth of Virginia has headquartered the state capital here. So 30% of our properties in the city of Richmond are tax exempt. Which means they provide no revenue to this city. Which means we lose out on 50 million dollars each and every year. And you all also know that we have wicked, wicked challenges in the city. Whether it's poverty, public safety, or failing infrastructure, we have challenges unlike any other city in this state. In this state. And we have so many tools to provide the revenue necessary to fix some of those challenges. Now, you all know, earlier this year in March, now I guess eight months ago, I presented a bold tax policy for sustainability, for a sustainable source of revenue to fix some of the challenges I just mentioned. We took that policy off the table. And cities like ours, when you are landlocked and you have taxes in properties, you have to find revenue sources to fix some of these problems. And the only other tool outside of cutting our budget is to grow right here in the city of Richmond. You're developing underdeveloped properties right in downtown Richmond. That means growing this way. The question I ask for everyone in this room tonight is, do we want to be a city? Or do you want to continue to be a suburb? That's the question that's before us. We have an opportunity to go boldly into the next decade. Or we can be the keepers of the status quo. Where we talk about our problems, or we actually start finding the solutions to our problems. Now, here's the thing. Navy Hill is not the penicillin to all our problems here in the city. It's not the penicillin. We've never sold it as such. However, it provides us a solution, a revenue stream, and a positive step forward to fixing some of those problems. There's a lot of people out there who talk about pro schools, pro education, pro better infrastructure, pro this, that, and the other. But can't find me a dollar to pay for any of those challenges. And that's what Navy Hill presents for us today in 2019. So, you all know that the city has grown at roughly about 8% over the last couple of years. Neighborhoods like Scotts Edition, Manchester, and Chaco Bottom have been growing. You've seen it in your tax assessments. We were able to fund public education fully this year because of growth in tax assessments. We were to provide 16.2 million dollars for fixing roads. And that's why you see paving programs throughout the city because of growth in your tax assessments. However, that will not be the same year in and year out. That will not happen. So the city has grown at 8%. This part of downtown, right in the middle of downtown, has grown at 2%. And so folks say, "Why? How can we just let it grow organically? If it were to grow organically, we would've seen the 8%." But when you have disconnected infrastructure, as you see on Clay Street and on Sixth Street, you're not gonna get that sort of growth. And you have an obsolete deteriorating property called the Richmond Coliseum built in 1971. That's why you're not seeing the growth in downtown Richmond. That's why you're seeing the growth in Navy Hill. Additionally, as you all know, 30% of our properties are taxes in. In the increment financing area that's involved in this project, 60% of the properties are taxes in. So when folks ask the question, "Why is the tax increment financing area so large?" Because we have to grab more properties that actually produce taxes. So, what we're really talking about is 52 blocks, not 80 blocks. So as I stated, we're going to renovate, we're going to build a new arena in downtown Richmond. Why? Because this arena and this new development can be a magnet for investment. We're talking about 1.2 billion dollars in private investment. That investment, what I call "other people's money", allows us to build every component that you saw earlier in those slides. The affordable housing provides us the jobs, the transit center, the reconstruction of the transit grid downtown with the 1.2 billion dollars in investment. And, a new arena will also provide and be a catalyst for new investment in the future. Spinning off a billion dollars that we can fund into our priorities. A part of this package of ordinances and one resolution, and I provided to the city council on August 5th, is one that says 50% of those revenues will go to public education, my number one priority. 34%, 35% will go to affordable housing, a priority of mine. 15, I'm sorry, 15% will go to affordable housing, 35% to our core services. Building new roads and fixing sidewalks, things of that nature, and 1% to the arts. The reason why I think this is important for the city is because this is about quality of life. I talk about every day about building one Richmond. And that is, no matter who you are, what color your skin may be, how much money you have in your pocket, who you love or who you choose to pray to, that you can live a high quality of life right here in the city limits. As you live like your God-given talents. And for those who've lived in this city for a very, very long time and have seen projects passed that may have not been so successful, I say this. In 2019, we are not the city that we were in 1980. We're not the city we were in 1971. We're not the city that we were 100 years ago. People are choosing to live in this city. This is the time to take advantage of folks choosing to live in this city. And also to provide them the quality of life that they deserve. So that's not only working on the priorities I've already spoken about, but also to ensure that we build, provide an entertainment district that those who come from all over the Mid-Atlantic and the East Coast can suspend money right here in our city to pay for those priorities. And in addition to that, if you are a grandfather, a grandmother, a father or a mother, and let's say you want to save your money up one, at one time during the year to take your granddaughter, your grandson, or your child to a game or a show, that you can do it right here in Richmond, and you don't have to do it in Charlottesville, and you don't have to do it in Washington DC. A lot of us are able to do that who are in this room today. But a lot of folks in the city who can't do that. I recall a moment in my life, when I asked my father, "Dad", before he died, I said, "Dad, I want to take you to a Nats game." I had my cousin drop him off right here in the city of Richmond. I said, "Dad, I'm gonna drive you up to DC." And I had to take my dad all the way up to DC to see the game, to give him a little bit of entertainment. And he smiled the whole time. That's a moment I will never forget. There's a number of people in this room who remember those moments when the Richmond Coliseum was actually operative. And it created those moments. Folks coming to Elvis or Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, you name it. We used to do it right here in the city of Richmond. We can create those moments today and for the future. And also fund the priorities necessary to make us the city that we all desire, the city we love. So tonight, I ask that you ask the folks who will be up here with us the tough questions. I've always stated, I want you to interrogate them like the Republican majority in the Congress interrogated Hillary Clinton or James Comey or Bob Mueller. Ask them the tough questions. Why? Because we believe that this project stands on its merits. We wouldn't be doing this if we were hiding the facts and figures from this project. We believe this is transformed. Not only is this the largest economic development project in the city's history, it's the largest economic empowerment project in the city's history. And you all know that neighborhoods adjacent to this, they need this sort of opportunity. And that's why we're here tonight. To ask the tough questions, offer suggestions. I ask that we not start at "no", but we start at "yes", and work on how we perfect it, how we tweak it, and how we make it better for everyone. So now, I'm gonna have Leonard Sledge, the Director of Economic Development, come up and provide the components of Navy Hill. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Let's try that again.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. As has been shared, my name is Leonard Sledge, and it is my humble and distinct honor and privilege to serve as the Director of the Office of Economic Development for the city of Richmond. I am absolutely thrilled and ecstatic to be a part of the administration and to be of service to this wonderful city. Over the next 15 minutes or so, I'm going to give you an overview of the Navy Hill project. This is a very visual presentation, and I'll add some commentary to go along with it, if that's okay with everybody. Is that alright?
It's alright.
Alright. So, how did we get to this point? The mayor mentioned the RFP process, but we have to actually go back in time a little bit to 2009, when Richmond City Council adopted the downtown master plan for the city. That master plan had a lot of citizen engagement, and it spoke specifically about the things that you see there. Reopening Clay Street and connecting it to Court Inn. Integrating the Richmond Coliseum into a walkable urban fabric. And also improving the connections between the convention center and everything else in downtown. And more recently, in 2007, city council approved the post-corridor master plan. Again, citizen engagement, and now we have an award-winning bus rapid transit system here in the city of Richmond. But in that plan, it talks specifically about mixed-use development. Or oftentimes, you'll hear the phrase referred to as "transit-oriented development". And really, with the Navy Hill project, with the proximity to the post, with the opportunity to create a new transit center, we are talking about transit-oriented development, not only with this project, but also in future projects in this general area. We're doing this project because this is what our city center looks like today. We have a functionally obsolete Richmond Coliseum that's 40-plus years old. We have a number of parcels, of pieces of property, that are owned by the city. The mayor mentioned the amount of real estate, tax-exempt real estate that exists in the city of Richmond. And in the immediate heart of the downtown area, that figure is approximately $3 billion. And that $3 billion equates to about $33 million a year on our real estate tax roll. And that's just in downtown. But also, the planning studies approved by Richmond City Council really do point to a project like what we are talking about tonight, the Navy Hill project. The mayor touched on the community benefits, and I'm not gonna go too much in detail with them. But we have an opportunity to create more affordable housing in our city. Affordable housing across the spectrum. The mayor mentioned 480 units, and through the incremental revenues that we will realize as a result of this project, there's a pathway to hundreds more. The opportunity for minority business participation. $300 million in minority business opportunities, not just during the construction phase, but post-construction as well. As the mayor mentioned, this is an economic empowerment project and an opportunity for new businesses, for nascent businesses, for aspiring entrepreneurs to really dig their heels in and launch that business that they've been desiring. Job creation during the construction phase and also doing the permanent aspect after construction. And as a part of this development project, there is a jobs team that is going out into Richmond neighborhoods to help make sure that people have the appropriate preparation, training, skills, soft skills, technical skills, hospitality, service skills, you name it. So that when those jobs are available, day one, our citizenry is ready to take advantage of those income-producing opportunities. Clay Street, right now, if you drive down Clay Street, well, actually, you can't drive all the way down Clay Street. But this project, as a result of this project, the developer is using private funding to create the public infrastructure that we need in our downtown area. The convention hotel, and we'll touch a little more on that, but the convention hotel is really critical for us fully reaching the potential of the Greater Richmond Convention Center. And it's not that the convention center is doing bad, but we miss opportunities because we do not have enough hotel room nights here in downtown Richmond and in the city. The Blues Armory, the opportunity to renovate that historic building and see it come back to life in a way that the developer is paying the cost for renovation. In addition to that, the mayor mentioned a new transit center for GRTC. The demolition and defeasance of the Coliseum debt. Ladies and gentlemen, there is existing debt on the Richmond Coliseum. Debt was put in, that was put in place several years ago as we looked to, as a city, reinvigorate and recreate opportunities for the Richmond Coliseum. But also, again, this project, through the infrastructure, stormwater, utilities, all of those things are being paid for by the developer. We mentioned the housing piece of it. And immediately from day one, as this development is coming online, there will be 280 affordable units. And those will be units that will be for lease and for sale. But what's also codified in the development agreement is the fact that if you have a housing voucher, you can use your housing voucher and live in this Navy Hill development. But in addition to that, during the period in which the city was negotiating with the developers, the city recognized that we want to be able to have deeper levels of affordability so that we can have the opportunity for a myriad of citizens across incomes in our city to benefit from this project. And so, to make that happen, the developers and folks associated with the project, they said, "We will raise $10 million in private philanthropic giving and work with the Better Housing Coalition so that we can create 200 affordable, more affordable housing units at deeper levels of affordability." And through the incremental revenues, as the mayor mentioned, it's being recommended that 15% of the incremental revenues associated with this project go towards creating more affordable housing and also programming for homeless services. Also, we mentioned the minority business participation, and so I won't belabor that any longer. But tying this piece together, particularly the last bullet on the job standpoint, we oftentimes talk about affordability and housing. But I believe the real opportunity is to create jobs, great-paying jobs, so that a person doesn't need a house that's at 30% of the AMI. But through them establishing a career and progressing in that career, they're able to afford more and be able to live still in quality housing in the city. So we're really talking about economic mobility. The developer has hired a minority business coordinator who is working, who has identified any and every type of opportunity for minority business to participate in this project. And helping to get individuals ready, again, from a capacity building standpoint, from a financial services standpoint, working with banks in the area, again, to be successful in this project. There's the opportunity for minorities to have an ownership stake in this project as well. Recognizing the history of the Navy Hill area and that it is a strong desire on the minority side for individuals to have opportunities for ownership. And so what you see here is a ground-level conceptual floor plan, so to speak, in terms of how the development would happen at the ground level. Showing you ground-level commercial, retail, office, residential, hospitality, and entertainment. But one thing is very important to take into consideration. The development that you see on this particular map is only possible because of the infrastructure that the developer is paying for. And in addition to that, where we see new vertical construction and the overwhelming majority, while the land exists, the actual lots and parcels do not exist. So with the ordinances that were introduced to city council, it talked about recreating parcel lines and easements and things of that nature to create the actual parcels to sell for development to take place. Parcels that do not exist today in this area. And so here, what we shift around and call the CAF blocks, C-A-F and E, shows literally the first wave of development. And this is very important because what you see highlighted in blue is what has to come up out of the ground simultaneously with the new arena. And I'd also like to point out that in this redevelopment project, the mayor did mention 1.2 billion dollars of private investment. 1.2 billion dollars of other people's money. And that's really important because the only part of this project, the only part of this redevelopment plan that leverages public financing is the arena. That's it. Everything else is private dollars. It's other people's money. People who believe in the growth of Richmond, people who believe in the opportunities that exist in Richmond, and people also who recognize the priorities of the city in terms of creating pathways for more funding for schools, more affordable housing, and any and everything that we talked about in terms of the community benefits. And then at full build-out, the full master plan for the Navy Hill area, this is what we see, this is what we believe will be realized in a five-year horizon. If you're standing on Fifth Street and you're looking out from the Greater Richmond Convention Center, and you're looking across the street, this is what you see today. Not only do you see it as citizens, but any and every person who comes and visits our city, this is what they see. They see the 1970s era Richmond Coliseum, they see a large plaza area that has no activity, they see a closed-down Blues Armory, a closed-down Sixth Street Market that continues to fall into disrepair. This slide is important because you'll see the tunnel that goes down Clay Street into the lower level of the Richmond Coliseum. People have said, "Well, how is it that someone else can't come in and do this project?" Well, someone else coming in and doing this project would also have to recreate all of the public infrastructure to create the street grid that we're lacking in this part of our downtown so that we can create the development blocks so that a project can move forward. This map shows you the streets, the active streets in this general area of downtown. The yellow is where a car can drive today. The red hatch lines is literally where you can't, you do not have a continuous flow or any flow of vehicular traffic. But with this project, as you're at Broad Street and you're looking south down Sixth Street, a pedestrian walkway will be created with ground-level retail, and we'll show you a rendering of that. Clay Street will extend clear from Fifth Street all the way out to Court Inn as a result of this project. Again, public infrastructure that the private developer is paying for using their own funding. This is very important, again, the Crystal Palace at the Sixth Street Marketplace. This Crystal Palace, this glass structure, literally will be lifted up, taken away, and then the new infrastructure built to open up Sixth Street. This is the plaza area looking from the Richmond Coliseum to the Blues Armory and the Crystal Palace. And this is a rendering of what the area will be recreated to be. Again, ground-level retail. We are able to see and appreciate the facade of the Blues Armory. And just a very activated space, again, all paid for by the developer. As we go here, the existing parking structures in downtown, the parking garages will stay intact, and the parcels that are created will have residential development wrapped around them. And so this rendering shows you what that would look like at Marshall Street and Sixth Street. Here, again, ground-level, looking at the Coliseum. And this rendering shows you what the new arena, the facade, will look like. But what's important about this is it's not an arena that's just standing alone in isolation. It's an arena that has an office building, a Class A office building attached to it, as well as a residential tower. This project is projected to create over 900,000 square feet of new Class A office space in downtown Richmond. And that's really important for our economic development activities. The reason why is because we want to always be in position to recruit more companies of all different shapes and sizes to the city. And the way that we do that, what helps to make our job easier, is And the way that we do that, what helps to make our job easier, is when we have office product ready and available for companies to lease. And the fact that the developer is willing to build that on a speculative basis without having a surefire tenant in hand speaks volumes for our market and how strong of an opportunity we have in the city of Richmond. Typically, developers are looking to have someone lease at, lease at least 50% of their building before they will even start construction. And day one, out of the ground with this project, that office building gets built. The mayor mentioned the arena at 17,500 seats would be the largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Uh, the wonderful thing, and, and I'm sure Ty Blickman, who's with Spectra and here with us tonight, will share with us, it doesn't have to be at capacity every night for it to be a winning proposition. And the beautiful thing about the arena is that it can and will be reconfigured to host not only sporting events, but conventions, concerts, meetings of all shapes and sizes, family, music, rodeo, whatever. Now, we think about that in the context of the Richmond Coliseum. The last time the NCAA tournament was held in the, at the Richmond Coliseum was in 1996. That was the last year, 1996. And we have an opportunity to attract the NCAA tournament, but many, many more sporting events and also entertainment events. Again, you see the, the aerial looking at Clay Street, uh, what exists today. And again, a rendering that shows multifamily residential wrapping around the existing parking garages with the elevated street at Clay Street, and again, us being able to go vertical with development in the city. Uh, the backside of the Blues Armory, uh, and this is really important uh, because the Blues Armory, again, a historic building in the city of Richmond, severely underutilized in the fact that it is closed. And the developer is coming in and using their private dollars, and they are programming all 60,000 square feet of the Blues Armory and renovating it. The first floor is programmed to be a, a grocery store, uh, to help resolve our urban food desert issues. The second floor would be a music venue of some sort, and the third floor would be the ballroom space for the Convention Center. But the hotel is really a key piece of this. A 500-plus-room Hyatt Hotel will be built without any public subsidy. Uh, if you followed hotel development in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and if you've been, if you've spent time in the city of Norfolk downtown, one of the new crown jewels in the city of Norfolk is the Hilton Maine Hotel. That is a beautiful hotel. It is 300-plus rooms, and the city of Norfolk has invested $105 million into that one hotel. And what I'm telling you tonight is that with this particular project, 500 keys, there is not a penny of public money going into that property. And that is very, very rare. But also, more importantly, is it helps Jack Barry and his team at the Greater Richmond, uh, at the Richmond Region Tourism Organization be able to sell more hotel room nights. And I'm sure Jack will go into a little more detail, but right now, as a city, in the last year, in the past 12 months, we have documented losses of 50,000 room nights, lost business because we do not have enough hotel room nights in this city. I will say it again, there are not enough hotel room nights in the downtown area to continue to attract bigger and larger and more frequent meetings. If we had the room nights, more conventions would come. Uh, this is the Public Safety Building. Uh, this also serves as the transfer center for GRTC. Uh, think about a couple of days ago when it was snowing, right around the time people were getting off of work, right about the time people were picking up children from school, and individuals had to wait outside in the snow without a place to stay warm, without a place to use the restroom, without a place to buy a cup of coffee or snack while they were waiting for their bus. Richmond, we can do better than this. And as a result of this project, there will be a new GRTC Transit Center, again, so that Richmonders and everyone traveling through our city will be able to wait with pride and dignity as they're going to and from work, home, or any and everywhere else they want to go using our transit system. The next two, the next two images just show you a rendering of, of what could be in terms of the transfer center, the transit center. This is an image of the Blues Armory. I mentioned the, the music venue space and what is imagined there. The ballroom at the upper level. And Mayor, if I may, just to spend a few moments, uh, because a lot of what's on the forefront of people's minds is the increment financing area. Uh, and we're glad to answer questions about that, but what I'd like to do is just briefly describe how the increment financing area works. In this 80-block TIF area, everything that you see in orange has an assessed value already. With this project, that real estate tax revenue continues to go to the city's general fund. So if I own a piece of real estate, let's say down in the bottom of the increment financing area in the orange, and if my tax bill, my real estate tax bill is $1,000, and next year, through the normal assessment process, my tax bill goes to $1,100, only the $100 goes to pay the bond debt. That's it. The $1,000 still continues to go to the city's general fund. That's what happens in the orange area. If I own a restaurant, or if I open up a new restaurant in the orange area, and the meals tax that's generated, the business professional occupational license tax, the sales tax that's generated, all of that continues to go to the general fund. It does not go to pay the debt on the bond. Now, everything that you see in blue, those are the new buildings that's called for in the Navy Hill redevelopment project. All of the real estate tax from those developments go towards repaying the bond. If I decide to open up a new clothing store, a new boutique, flower shop, a new restaurant, the meals tax, the sales tax, with the exception of the 1.5% that's dedicated to Richmond Public Schools, that still goes to RPS, but those dollars go to pay the bond debt. And through the new development, the overwhelming majority of the revenue there is sufficient to pay off the lion's share of the new arena. And so what happens? Because this is also a non-recourse bond. And what that means is simply this. The only revenue typically with your house or with your car, what secures that note is the piece of property. Well, what secures this bond are the revenues that are collected in this increment financing area, and only those revenues. And because it's what's called non-recourse, this is the best way that I can describe it. If the mortgage note on the arena is $1, and in this increment financing area, in a year, if all it is we collect is 75 cent, there's a gap, isn't there? There's a gap of 25 cent. It is not the city's responsibility. The city does not have a moral obligation. The city does not have a general obligation. The city cannot say, "Citizens, we need to raise more money." The city has no obligation to pay the extra 25 cent. That is the developers, that is the bondholders, that is the people who have invested and bind the bonds, that is their loss, not ours. We have no obligation to go into our CIP fund. There are no special tax districts, there are no special assessments in this increment financing area or anywhere else in the city as a result of this project. And because it is a non-recourse bond, and because it is designed the nature that it is, it does not impact the city's debt capacity. But what it does do, because of the new development, it actually increases our borrowing ability by about $50 million. But it does not count against the city's borrowing capacity. It does not count against the city's bond rating. And I just want to make that clear for everyone. And so what happens? So we gave you a bad scenario. We only collect 75 cent, but if we collect a dollar and 50 cent, and the mortgage note is only a dollar, that means we did pretty good, right? We have 50 extra cent to do something with. Well, the way that the agreement is in place, half of that 50 cent, so 25 cent, goes towards paying off the debt on the bond on the arena faster. No different than what our individual financial advisors or, or what we've heard family members tell us to try to make an extra mortgage payment a year on our house or make an extra card note payment a year. And by doing that, we pay off the debt on the arena in as little as 21 years. The extra 25 cent that's left, or the other half, that's the incremental new revenue to the city that gets programmed, hopefully according to the recommendation that the mayor has made, 50% to Richmond Public Schools, which will generate as much as $500 million of new revenue to RPS. 34% or $340 million for core city services, more public safety, more parks and rec, more streets and roads, more of the services that we all desire, need, and want here in the city. 15% for more affordable housing and homeless services, and 1% for arts, history, and culture. And I don't mean to oversimplify it, but ladies and gentlemen, that's what it is. And there are countless examples across the Commonwealth and other localities about non-recourse bond financing, and what is and what isn't associated with it. And so, Mayor, that concludes my comments, uh, and we'll be glad to move on to the next phase. Thank you, everyone.